At Monday, June 21, 2021, in the Walkway Meeting Room. Broadcast live on local cable channel 18, streamlined on the Town of Mashpee website, 6:30, and we're going to convene the meeting in open session. And I want the Planning Board to open their meeting before we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. This is a meeting of joint session. Mashpee Planning Board, Monday, June 21, 2021, Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649.
And a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence. Tonight, we will not have public comment or questions from the audience. This is an educational meeting for the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. We will be interacting with the Cape Cod Commission only. So I would like to introduce Kristi Santori. She's the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. Thank you, Kristi.
Great, thank you. Good evening, members of the Select Board, members of the Planning Board. I appreciate the invitation to be here this evening. I'm Kristi Santori, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. I am joined here this evening by Erin Perry, our Deputy Director, and Jordan Velozo, a Regulatory Planner. So we will try to answer questions as best we can this evening. Before I dive into details regarding development agreements, I did just want to take about five or 10 minutes to review some of the major concepts in the 2018 Regional Policy Plan. And so I have provided you all with a copy. This is also available online on our website, and certainly you're welcome to take a look through this at your leisure. This was approved in 2019 and is now in effect, and really should help provide the context for the Commission review of development agreements and projects entering into a development agreement. But it also provides some of the overarching planning principles which the Commission has identified for future growth and development. So I'm going to see if Evan can just advance the slides here. So starting with some of the key challenges that are facing our region, these include natural resources and marine and freshwater quality protection, the challenges that come with rising seas and coastal storms and warming temperatures, addressing our housing crisis, which is now significantly worsened with the COVID-19 pandemic, and doing it in a way that accounts for needed and planned infrastructure, and also ensuring our history and our heritage, including our architecture, our growth patterns, and our historic industries are preserved. So we've identified these key challenges that are facing in the region and hope that development agreements and projects that come through this process will also be responding to some of those key challenges that are facing our region. So the next series is a map series, and here you'll see, if we click onto the next one, this series sets the stage for the growth policy for Cape Cod. So here you can see those parcels that are colored in on the map shows development by decade, starting in the early 1900s through the 1960s. And you can see, really, starting in the 1950s, development increased rapidly across the region. So if we click one more time, and then again, you can see that there's a slight decrease through to the present day. And so then if you click again, you can actually see the developed parcel layer coupled with this 40% of the protected land layer across the region, and click one more time there, Evan, thanks, shows that about 86% of the Cape's landmass is either already protected or already developed. So we know that we'll continue to see growth in the region, but how and where we grow is important. So this data and information has really led us to develop the growth policy for Cape Cod, and this is found in our Regional Policy Plan and in other regional plans that have been developed by the Cape Cod Commission. We want to make sure we protect and preserve the region's resources while also giving some focus to future growth and development. And so the growth policy, which you'll see on the next slide, calls for just that. Yeah, just go one more. Great. So growth needs to be focused in centers of activity and areas supported by adequate infrastructure, guided away from areas that must be protected for ecological, historical, or other reasons. Development needs to be responsive to its context, allowing for the restoration, preservation, and protection of our unique resources here in the region while promoting economic and community resilience. So the Regional Policy Plan also looks at the Cape in terms of our interconnected systems. We have our natural systems, such as wetlands and water resources, our built systems, such as our transportation networks and climate change, and our community systems, looking at housing as well as the Cape economy. The growth policy that I referred to on the last slide really recognizes the importance of each of these three systems, and looking at these in terms of balancing their impacts and their functions so that we can sustain the Cape in the long term. So then if you go to the next slide, I just want to focus on this for just a moment. The 2018 RPP identifies eight place types across the region, and you'll see here, those start from natural systems, rural development areas, suburban development areas, historic and maritime areas, community activity centers, industrial activity centers, and military and transportation areas. And these place types really recognize and support the different and unique places that we have across the Cape, and support and serve as a conceptual framework for a lot of the context-sensitive design, planning, and regulation that I refer to in the growth policy. So the focus of much of the RPP update in that growth policy was really around the identification of community activity centers. So if you just click one more there, Evan, the community activity centers are identified as areas with a concentration of business activity, community activity, and they have a compact built environment with buildings that are connected by sidewalk networks as well as a network of streets and ways. And community activity centers are more walkable, and they're densely developed, more densely developed than the other place types that have been identified through the Regional Policy Plan. They're mixed commercial and residential uses, and they really make it possible to live and work within the same walking distance. And so if you go to the next one, you can see the vision, yep, here we go, the vision for these areas is really to accommodate mixed use, multifamily residential development in walkable, vibrant areas, preserving historic buildings, providing diverse services, shopping, recreation, civic spaces, housing and job opportunities at a scale of growth and development desired by the community, with adequate infrastructure and pedestrian amenities to support the development. And so here you'll see, we've identified 17 community activity centers across the Cape. This was done through a significant GIS analysis, and this analysis and identification is based on the existing features and conditions within the region. And so the towns will play a key role in defining the future and the vision of these areas. But this analysis that we conducted at the Cape Cod Commission identifies that these are areas that really have a strong foundation for future-focused growth. So while these place types have been identified based on existing conditions and similar characteristics, there are different scales and sizes and intensity of development across these community activity centers. So, for example, a community activity center in one town might share some characteristics of a community center within a neighboring community. However, they may be very different. And so one may have a historic village, while another may feel more like a downtown area. So some of the community activity centers you saw on that previous map were in areas such as downtown Orleans and areas such as Woods Hole or downtown Chatham and Mashpee Commons, downtown Provincetown, the areas that surround these activity centers. And so then here, what you'll see is each of the place types actually is accommodated by, or accompanied by, a series of strategies. And so these are some of the strategies for implementation for community activity centers. And here, you'll see some of the strategies for this particular place type is really encouraging mixed-use commercial and residential development in compact form, supporting a vibrant downtown area, encouraging development at a human scale that facilitates interaction and sense of community, developing infrastructure necessary to support a greater density and mix of uses, including access to transit, and integrating pocket parks, creating streetscapes that really enhance the built environment and provide community gathering spaces. So each of the place types is accompanied by a series of strategies such as this. And so lastly, on the Regional Policy Plan, is the identification of performance measures. These will be tracked over time, and these will really illustrate, or help us to illustrate, whether the region is moving forward toward the RPP vision of the future as the region is a vibrant, sustainable, healthy community. For example, an increase in housing diversity in terms of housing type, size, and rental versus ownership units will show that there are more opportunities for people of different ages and economic backgrounds to live on the Cape. Another example is an increase in the number of protected habitat acres will show progress towards safeguarding our natural environment, and increasing the number of parcels that are connected to the sidewalk network, certainly where appropriate. This will indicate an increased ability for people to walk around in the region without using their vehicles. So this is all by way of background, really just setting the stage for how we'll be looking at consistency with the Regional Policy Plan in terms of projects that get reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission through the development agreement process. So getting into the kind of detail of what a development agreement is, it's a tool that's used really to define the scope and substance of a proposed development. And this is a project that would benefit from a comprehensive review to allow for planning of efficient infrastructure. And so we have prepared a two-pager that you have been provided with that goes through some of the details around what the purposes of a development agreement, some of the application requirements, and what the process looks like for review of a development agreement. Development agreements are agreements where there's an opportunity for the participating parties really to collaborate on design and permitting and construction of projects that are consistent with the overarching framework of the Regional Policy Plan. So projects that are eligible, as many of you already know, are typically large areas of development, they contain multiple uses or structures, and they're anticipated to be built in phases over a period that would exceed seven years, which is your typical timeframe for a development of regional impact versus a development agreement. And they have anticipated future expansions that are not yet fully defined. So as you all know, Mashpee Commons submitted their notice of intent to the Cape Cod Commission to proceed through the development agreement process. This was approved by the Cape Cod Commission. And then in 2019 and 2020, both the Select Board and the Planning Board voted to support this process, proceeding through the development agreement process for Mashpee Commons. And then certainly, as you're all well aware, in 2021, the town chose to be a party to and participate in the development agreement process as a three-party development agreement process with the applicant, Mashpee Commons, and then the Cape Cod Commission. And so as you're all probably well aware as well, this is the first three-party agreement process the Commission has undertaken, and we, as the Commission and the town, I think, have an opportunity to really define what that process looks like. So, yep, we can go right to the next one. With a three-party development that involves the applicant, the Commission, and the municipality, the town, it's anticipated that the municipality and the Commission would conduct parallel review processes. And so here also, the Commission staff is suggesting that it may make sense for the municipality and the Commission to each designate a staff liaison that could help to communicate and facilitate and coordinate negotiations throughout these two parallel processes and as the development agreement is drafted. And so if we go to the next slide, this is a process outline, and certainly, this is meant for illustrative purposes, unlike a development of regional impact where we have fairly specific timeframes associated with it, a development agreement doesn't have predetermined timeframes for review. So here you'll see, on the left side, in March of 2020, Mashpee Commons was deemed eligible for development agreement process. And then in March of 2021, the Select Board voted to act as a participating party in the development agreement, and Mashpee Commons has initiated their application filing. We anticipate additional materials will continue to be submitted. And once we're ready to go to a public hearing, certainly we'll establish our subcommittee for this process, and that review period would begin. So consistent with the previous slide showing those two parallel processes, here Mashpee would conduct its own review period, review process, looking at local review and consideration of zoning. And the Commission Subcommittee would also be looking at a review in subcommittee hearings. And again, as I mentioned, Mashpee Commons would continue to submit materials that would be responsive to those requests as the process review proceeds. And so certainly, development agreement drafting would be happening, and there would be a public hearing at the Commission level where a development agreement would be approved by the Commission, and it would be forwarded to the town for approval. So this is, of course, illustrative in terms of the process outline. There are many steps along the way that we'll need to provide some more of that detail. And so just in terms of the subcommittee process where the Commission would be holding subcommittee hearings, we would impanel a five-member Subcommittee of the Commission, and they would hold hearings where they would receive public testimony and review the proposed development. And at the conclusion of those Subcommittee hearings, the Subcommittee may direct the drafting of the development agreement. The Subcommittee would then make a recommendation to the full Cape Cod Commission. And then the Commission must hold a public hearing to consider that development agreement. In the case of a three-party agreement such as this, if the Commission adopts the development agreement, it's then presented to the municipality for consideration. So this is the high-level overview of the process in brief, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning, this is really an opportunity for the Commission and the town to define the process for ourselves. So I think this is probably the first of many process opportunities for discussion, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or hear your thoughts on the process as well. So thank you very much.
Where are you going to hold these public hearing meetings? In Mashpee, the town of Mashpee?
Sure, I'm happy to answer your question. There is a requirement that a hearing be held in the town of Mashpee, so certainly we would want to make sure that there was an opportunity for the public to be able to participate in that. And if holding it in the town or a virtual meeting, we're happy to work through those discussions, but we would certainly make sure to try to have those hearings in Mashpee.
Okay, I have another question. I didn't see you mention anything when you showed those slides about the character of the Cape Cod that was missing out of all those little pictures you showed. And in some of your policy plan, it says the character. So I hope we keep the character of the Cape, and it's not like a town, like you say, a city, you know? But I didn't know, how come you didn't mention that?
So absolutely, that's a great question. And so without diving into too much detail about the review process itself, we would certainly be looking at consistency with the Regional Policy Plan, which includes many different goals, which of community character and community design is certainly one of those. So looking at the goals and objectives that are in that Regional Policy Plan, looking at design guidelines is important. We also have a variety of guidance documents, including some of our local technical guidance that is designing the future to honor the past, so there are absolutely designed considerations that would be evaluated.
And then one more question. I didn't see anything about the Planning Board being on any of these meetings, would you?
So absolutely, and I think this is really where the opportunity to find the process needs to happen, and I think that there's opportunity for a joint meeting along the way, and then there's opportunities also for parallel processes to happen where the Commission Subcommittee and the Planning Board has that negotiating body to also hold its own process.
I think it's important to have the Planning Board aboard.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
One of the things you mentioned there under the community activity center about density, is there a specific formula in how they determine the density is calculated?
There isn't a specific formula for density. So community activity centers are areas that can accommodate additional growth and development, additional density, but they have to have the appropriate and adequate infrastructure in place as well to accommodate that. So while it certainly isn't, you know, a certain amount of units per acre in accordance with the Commission's regulations, we'd of course want to make sure that it was consistent with the other goals and objectives within the Regional Policy Plan. So looking at, as your fellow member mentioned, looking at design and looking at the types of housing that might be needed to accommodate the type of growth that the community wants to see.
It is one of the questions that come up because one of the things that's been purported in the paper is 1,700 homes or 1,700 units. And so we're curious, as a board and from the public, is how that density was calculated? So it's a question that's come up, and I wasn't sure if there's a formula or if that's based on what the Commons is looking for. I'm not sure at this point.
I think that's part of their development proposal that would certainly need to be evaluated as we go through the process, but I would certainly rely on the applicant for that detailed information.
If zoning changes are pursued by the town with this project, is that going to hold up the Commission from holding their final review and approval?
So certainly, I think that this can follow parallel tracks, and the Commission review can happen concurrently with reviewing the local zoning. The local zoning would certainly want to be in place prior to a development agreement being executed, but I think that these could happen on parallel tracks where it wouldn't necessarily delay either process.
And one other question that's come up before us is regarding 25-year plan. Is that unreasonable? I know that it says greater than seven years for large developments as a minimum. Is 25 years unreasonable in the eyes of the Commission to have a plan last that long?
No, I think this is something that we anticipate would be a lengthy agreement, and a development agreement which is seven years, we often find that those need to be extended past those seven years, even for a smaller project. And it's not the first time that a development agreement has requested an extended period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up on some of Jack's process questions? Kristi, you mentioned, you said there that they could happen on parallel tracks. Can they also be sequential? Can a development agreement be hammered out and then have the zone, when all three parties agree to it, and then have the zoning changed to reflect the terms of the agreement?
They can be sequential, and so certainly this is a discussion and a decision that would need to be made at the local level. I do think that there is some merit in having those local zoning discussions happen simultaneously, but certainly there is a sequencing that could happen. And there are a variety of ways that you could make that zoning change. But if the parallel tracks were to happen, those local conversations could be happening at the same time as the Commission Subcommittee conversations could be happening. You just wouldn't have a final executed development agreement until that zoning was in place.
So the last step in the process, even if everybody agrees, has to be the signing of the development agreement. That has to follow the adoption of the enabling zoning, right?
If that were the case, the development agreement could be approved conditionally upon that zoning change. That's certainly one approach to this.
Can the zoning be made contingent upon the execution of the development agreement?
I think that's-
I guess what I'm concerned about is, you come up with an agreement, it has certain things, and you change the zoning, and then the agreement doesn't get executed, but the zoning's there. So how does one think about ensuring the integrity of the process through to the end?
That's where you may want to have that conditional approval, so it would be conditioned upon signature of the chairs of both the Planning Board and the Select Board and the Commission upon approval of that zoning amendment. If the zoning was to be amended at some point, you'd want to go back and take a look at that development agreement. So that's something that we could certainly map out the process for.
Okay, just two more. In your chart, when you're going through when the, you know, the agreement would then get recommended, would ultimately get recommended to the Commission for adoption, how does a town, as a three-party agreement, how and where does the town sign off on what goes to the Commission? How does that happen? Is there a formal process for that? And I guess, underlying the question is a concern that if the town's not in agreement with development agreement, can it proceed to the Commission for approval?
So there are a variety of ways that we could structure this. I think what would likely make the most sense would be to have a joint hearing at the beginning, everybody hears the same information, and you then separate, do your parallel tracks, then the bodies get back together at the end of the process and agree on a certain set of findings that would be incorporated into that development agreement draft. That would then be endorsed by both the Commission and the town, so that you're comfortable that the language contained within that development agreement is approvable by both bodies.
Is the town a signatory to the agreement?
The Select Board.
Select Board is. Okay. And then last, and this may be sort of the most overarching question, what legal authority does the development agreement have? Does it stand in the place of a DRI review? Does it, what is the end product of this, and what does it get everybody?
So it would be in place of a development of regional impact. So instead of going through the process of a development of regional impact, anytime something exceeded a mandatory threshold, this would encompass the entire project and look at this more comprehensively. So it's really an opportunity for the town to be able to take a look at the project, the Commission to be able to look at the project and the plan comprehensively. And so certainly, this vests the development rights for the length of the agreement, and it does have a legal standing of a contract. And so certainly, at any point during this process, if the town or the Commission were to find that this no longer served in the best interests of either party, they could certainly retract their participation in that, so.
So what if either party, or any of the parties, gets buyer's remorse? So like, all right, we don't like this deal. We're 12 years in, for some reason we don't like it. Do we have the ability, does it free zoning for the lifetime of the agreement? Does, what authority does the town have to change its underlying zoning? What authority does the developer have to change what they intend to do within the confines of the area covered by the agreement? And what does future change in the Commission's view on suitable development due to this agreement?
So there are a couple of sections within the development agreement regulations that deal with modifications. So if there were opportunities at any point in the future where changes needed to be made, there are minor modifications and major modifications. But there's also an amendment and rescission section, so there's opportunities for both of those to potentially happen in the future.
Do we have a set of rules or guidelines that we can go by for this?
So I'm happy to provide a draft or a copy of our development agreement regulations so that everybody can see those, if that would be helpful in terms of seeing the rules. That is probably a place to start. And I know the town has your local bylaw as well.
Thank you, Kristi.
Kristi, so it sounds to me like it would make sense for us, and I don't want to, just my own opinion, but that the Planning Board should continue on with their discussions in zoning. You're all going to work on the comprehensive plan with joint communication with all of us, and- and both tracks will just continue forward with discussions. Does that make sense? Is that, am I hearing that correctly as far as?
Yes, so I think that we'll take in all the information that the applicant is submitting, and we'll be able to hold some of those substantive public hearings on the merits of the submission and look at those in light of the regional policy plan and the Cape Cod Commission Act. And certainly, the town can hold a parallel process where it looks at the application that's been submitted as well. I do think there are opportunities for potential joint hearings or joint meetings. And that's something that, you know, maybe doesn't need to be discussed tonight, but it's something that certainly could be considered. And perhaps an outline of that process might be helpful at some point once the process gets started.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to look at it from a perspective of, I think if you went forward with the comprehensive plan without furthering the discussions with the planning board and the zoning changes, we'd almost be cutting out the planning board's involvement and input to the town. So I think, I think working collaboratively, I think that makes sense, so.
Yeah, I think it's very important to have an open communication to going down the parallel track and see what happens at the end.
Kind of the way we're going down the track now.
Yeah.
But I don't think the planning board's role is strictly zoning. I think the planning board is taking a more broad approach to this and looking at a, not only just the zoning changes that necessitate some of this, but also looking at what this final project's going to look like. So I think we're looking at all of it. But I think for me, just not a parallel track with this, but a parallel track in looking at the zoning and the plan itself at the same time. Because I don't think a plan can go forward with an idea of what the zoning would need to be to support that planning, that plan. So I think we're going to be, have a broader look at it, but not just focused on zoning.
Right. No, I agree. My whole thought was, I hate to see the comprehensive plan come down the road and say, this is the guidelines of the zoning that's going to be, that was agreed upon? And that's like, then it's back to...
They're working on something else.
I think that comes down to open communications.
That's it.
That's all it is. It's very simple.
I think this should, when we go to vote on these zoning changes, the comprehensive plan should be signed in our hands before we bring it to the town. Because once we vote these zoning changes, there's no necessary saying Mashpee Commons has to go by this development agreement. They got the zoning changes, and if it passes, they can go do what they want without a development agreement. I think it's most important we have the development agreement and the zoning changes all together at that town meeting. If we have it in March or in October, we should have that already in our pocket. And another thing with the twenty-five-year agreement. So when I'm getting ten years, twelve years down the road, the town sees, this ain't working. We got too much traffic, blah, blah, blah. We can stop this development agreement because last meeting we were at, they said only the Mashpee Commons could change the development agreement in the town. Once we've signed it, we couldn't have no chance of revising this plan. So now you're telling me something different than last week what we were told.
There is a rescission section within the regulations, and so I'm happy to go into a little bit more detail on that.
No, but so we do still have a chance to, oh, yeah, there's...
So amendments and rescissions need to be ratified by all parties to the agreement.
No, okay, that don't sound right to me. The town should be able to say, hey, we don't like this project, we want to back off from it. The developers should say the same thing, we don't like this thing, we want to back off of it. Not the developer having all the say without the town.
Well, she's not saying that. She's not saying that. She's saying it's a three-party agreement. There's three, three parties at the table.
Okay.
Yes, Mary.
So I just want to say that you, 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 once zoning is in place, it's in perpetuity unless you have a sunset clause. So there are towns that put sunset clauses in zoning. So if people want to look at this in ten years to see how the zoning is doing, you can put a sunset clause so that zoning dies unless it goes back to town meeting and is reapproved. So that's one tool. The development agreement, I believe the changes to the development agreement are conditional on the developer putting forth that. I could be wrong, but I thought there was a strong prejudice towards the developer putting, going forward in amending the development agreement. But again, you can, you can put, the development agreement is a contract, we have a lawyer. You can put what you want in there, right? So if you want to have it reviewed in ten, fifteen, twenty years, you can do that. You need to talk to town council about that. I did want to ask Christie about the RPP. Does the RPP require transfer of development rights for increased activity in these commercial activity centers?
So the regional policy plan, the project would be looked at in terms, in light of the regional policy plan goals and objectives. And so certainly looking at the development project in its totality and looking at what those impacts are and the potential strategies to address some of those impacts are will be part of that approach. So I can't weigh in on the detail of that at the moment, but, you know, certainly we'd be happy to elaborate on that later.
So just to let everybody know, Mashpee zoning by law, there is transfer of development rights. It's our cluster subdivision by law and our open space incentive development by law. So our zoning does talk about transfer of development rights. If you don't know what it is, you should Google it. It's upzoning someplace else with concurrent downzoning someplace else. And can we go back to the process slide? So as most of you know, there is Chapter D, the regulations of the Cape Cod Commission for development agreements. And then there is a local bylaw on development agreements. And if you look at the process slide, it looks like it's only showing the Cape Cod Commission regulations. Because to address John's point, right, you, the planning board is not just going to look at zoning. We're also going to be looking at the development agreement at the same time. We're going to be doing two things, okay? And the planning board plus one is the negotiation team. And the negotiation team negotiates the proffers with, you know, I think that's it, yeah. We negotiate the proffers, which are things like affordable housing, infrastructure improvement, recreation improvements, mitigation from the developer. So it's all in our development agreement by law that the town has. So before it goes to the Board of Selectmen, it has to be voted on affirmatively by the planning board. It's sent to the Board of Selectmen for approval. If you don't approve it, you send it back to us with suggestions to change it. And it goes, it's going to keep going back and forth if there's not agreement. So that was, I think this slide, maybe Evan could help out and put the planning board on that slide to add us in. Oh, I wanted to ask, has there ever been a twenty-four, a twenty-five-year development agreement approved from the start?
So a development agreement was executed in a different town, and I believe the length of that was either twenty or twenty-five years. And I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, but it was one of the two.
And I'm wondering, you mentioned the local technical bulletins. If you could give us the list that's going to be considered during the Cape Cod Commission's review of that.
So we'll be looking at the goals that are contained within the regional policy plan, corresponding information in that plan. So all of that's available on our website if you go to the regional policy plan page. It's got all the information on there.
So I have, you'll have to forgive me, but I find the website a little confusing. So if we could have a list of them, that would be great.
Sure, we can certainly work.
Just so I don't have to hunt, pick, and forget something. Now, you mentioned some architectural and site design standards that you're going to be looking to review this application. What was, what did you say that was?
So again, going back to the regional policy plan, looking at community character, community design is one of those overarching areas we'll be looking to do a review. And certainly I don't know all of the components yet of the submission and how we'd be reviewing that, but that would certainly be details we'll work through with our subcommittee and certainly with our technical staff over the next several months or so.
And I wanted to go back to the specifics of this application itself. The notice of intent was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission on December 12, 2019. It was under consideration of the Cape Cod Commission, and it was deemed as eligible and suitable under consideration of a development agreement with the commission on March 5, 2020, right? Then it had a year, there was a year during which the applicant could submit a complete application. So that due date was March 5, 2021. We received, the planning board received correspondence that was copied to the town planner of the development agreement and had an application cover sheet, project description, list of land parcels, certified abutters, an illustrated site plan, and a community activity center overlay district zoning amendment map. But I read the Chapter D, which is Cape Cod Commission, Chapter D, the Development Agreement Regulations and Section 5(c). There's a list of other things the application is supposed to include, including a legal description of land, a recent survey of the land, the development uses currently permitted, and the development uses proposed, including residential densities, building densities and height, description of the facilities and infrastructure that will serve the development, description of any reservation or dedication of land and waters for public purpose, description of all local development permits needed for the proposed development, and the final environmental impact report. So thank you for your patience in listening to that. So I see that those would do on March 5. So has all of those items listed in Section 5(c) been submitted to the Cape Cod Commission?
So application materials have been submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. Our staff is currently reviewing those application materials, and they're identifying additional information that's needed so that we can then process that application. And so I think as we've kind of discussed, this is a little bit more of an iterative process than a, you know, single parcel development of regional impact. And so additional data and information will be necessary along the way to support the application. And our staff is reviewing that and will be working to make sure that we have the appropriate materials and information so that we can review it.
Right, so, so how, so there was a missed deadline. There was a missed deadline of March 5, 2021. How can that missed deadline be cured and what would be a good reason for curing that missed deadline?
So the application materials have been submitted, and so staff is reviewing those. And they're identifying now what additional materials will be needed so that we can then move forward with holding these subcommittee hearings. We don't want to, you know, miss something that we would want to have submitted along the way. So that's certainly a component that we'll continue to work with over the next several months in identifying those additional materials so that we can appropriately analyze the impacts and proceed.
And has the applicant paid the application fee?
That I'm not actually sure of the answer, but I'm happy to work with my staff and find out.
And so the staff has not certified that the application is complete, right?
This is a little bit different than kind of a traditional development of regional impact where we have timelines.
This is in your, this is Chapter D, this is the development agreement, this is from that.
Right, no, I understand, but this is a little bit more of a project, a process where we want to be collaborative. And so that's why, you know, we're here this evening to make sure we're working collaboratively with the town. We're getting the information submitted that will be helpful to process the application. And so the timeframes that are associated with, you know, say, a development of regional impact don't apply here. And that's where there's more flexibility to be able to work collaboratively.
This is from your regulations for a development agreement. I'm not reading the DRI regs.
Understood.
Okay. All right, so no answer for that. Has the Cape Cod Commission chair appointed a subcommittee yet?
A subcommittee will be impaneled once we have the appropriate information so that we can move forward with reviewing the subject matter appropriately.
I support Dennis's suggestion that we have the public hearings in Mashpee. I think the vast majority of them should be in Mashpee.
Oh, I think they should be.
I understand that it's a regional, it's worth a hundred and seventy DRIs if you do the math, right? So I'm sure that other towns will want to have something in their town, but I really, I like that idea. And I do encourage as many joint meetings. So I don't know, Evan, if it's the next slide, the parallel process slide. You know, had like the parallels process slide, I think there should be a point where we start to meet together because we're going to be, yeah, see the, yeah, the six boxes. Because we're going to be negotiating proffers and the benefits to the town. And I think there's, there should be a point where we meet jointly with the Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee and our negotiation team so that we're kind of going in the same direction.
I think she did identify there being a liaison, which will help us with that, I think.
I don't want a staff liaison, I want...
No, but the liaison could help facilitate those meetings, I think, right?
Not in place of our negotiating team.
No, the liaison could help us set up those joint meetings, I'm saying.
And I, and Madam Chair, I have comments for the Board of Selectmen before we end the meeting. Thank you.
I have one other question too. You can go ahead, sir.
I noticed on page two of your outline handout, it refers to a final environmental impact report. I'm just curious as to what the anticipated timeline would be for the planning board and for the Board of Selectmen to receive that.
I believe at this point we have... We don't know if the fire is fired at this point, and that's why we have not...
Okay, so we'll have to, we'll have to get back to you on that, but we don't know if we'll actually need an updated environmental impact report.
So just for clarity, you don't know if it triggers, and if it does, which filing thresholds for a MEEPA review would be required, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you only, you only involve an EIS or an EIR if one is otherwise triggered by MEEPA, but your process doesn't trigger one by itself.
Right, and I'm happy to, you know, clarify and get back to you on that.
So under the DRI process, though, projects are required to go through the environmental impact considerations, right? Review process?
So if...
Under the standard DRI process.
If it triggers an EIR through MEEPA, it would require a DRI. But the development agreement would take place of that process. And so we just need to get some clarity on whether, whether we need to, whether there needs to be an amended final impact report.
Because that kind of leads into one of my questions, that under the DRI process, most projects are subject to mass historical commission review. With a project of this size between two of our rivers, I'm wondering if that, if that step is going to be implemented somewhere along the process in this scenario.
And so again, going back to the regional policy plan, that's typically something that's looked at under the goals, as you're well aware, the goals of the regional policy plan. So looking at that type of a review would be a component of this development agreement process as well.
I think, I think I would feel more comfortable if it was, you know, if it was necessary and it did require the reviews because it is such a sizable development that it needs to be reviewed. Not, I'd hate to have further along in the process, something come along that, no findings of effect and not require one later in the process. You know, with the development of this size, I think we all need to do our due diligence at all levels in the environmental study, you know, the historical study, every, every aspect. And so planning ahead and doing those things in timely fashion where they inform the process early on, I think is the best approach and not, you know, find ways to mitigate that without properly getting the information to inform that process.
No, that's a great point, and so we'll certainly make sure that our staff is taking, our technical staff takes a look at that, too.
I had another question that the, so our local comprehensive plan hasn't been revised or updated since 1998. So it's inconsistent with the 2018 regional policy plan. So under the, you know, home rule and local authority, how are we, how are we adhering to the regional policy plan when our local comprehensive plan isn't consistent with the current, as revised, 2018 regional policy plan and all of its technical bulletins?
So you do have a certified local comprehensive plan. And so when we updated our local comprehensive plan regulations not too long ago, we did articulate that once an LCP has been certified as consistent, that it should be considered to remain certified until it's revoked. So the LCP that you have in place is something that we can proceed with. But I think because you're looking also at a comprehensive review at the local level and the consideration of all... of all these things that that, that process will entail, we'll be able to adequately review the proposal in light of the LCP.
Right now, Mashpee Commons has a special permit and other permits, but before we could go to the development agreement, don't we have to rescind those permits to start like anew, fresh? Because they are, they have a special permit going already, so, it has to be rescinded, I would think, before we can go forward. Am I right, or, I'm not a lawyer, but-
Well, I don't want to certainly weigh in on, on the local process here, I would rely on your, your staff to be doing that, but the development agreement itself could incorporate and encapsulate the comprehensive nature of a development, the development that's being proposed out there. So, I think that that's something that could continue and could assume the other, underlying permits.
Okay, I'd like to get, you know, consulting on that question, make sure we do it right, because the permit's still legal right now, what they got.
Look, you don't, you're not suggesting that they give away their rights to develop the property that they have right now?
No, but I think they have to give that-
That simultaneous, once they got their approval, right. Once they got their approval, then they would-
How can we approve something, another law on top of a law, like, it don't make sense, do we rescind that?
That's a good point.
The new plan would take over at that point.
Right.
Currently, our local planning board is going through a LCP update and review. Will that impact this project, if we modify our current LCP?
It shouldn't have an impact on this proposal, and I would just, again, offer that commission staff is certainly happy to, to help with that process. I know our staff has been coordinating, and is happy to continue to do that as well, but it shouldn't have an impact on this development review proposal.
And I have a simple process question, this may be just ignorance on my part, but after this, let's say, if down the road, this gets approved by the town and the commission, and moves forward, does the planning board or the selectmen have any role while construction's going on, if it does proceed? Do we, do we have any role in what's going on after that? I know that we were involved continuously throughout projects in the town. Once it's approved, does anyone have a role, or they just go on their own? Just, I'm just curious myself.
So, I think that's part of yet to be defined, and I think that's where the development agreement process is the negotiation, and where those phases aren't fully defined, there's an opportunity to determine where that potential interaction may happen.
So, it's part of the development agreement itself, that could be part of, included in-
It could be.
Okay, just curious.
So, Jack, if you, if we approve a zoning bylaw that's by right, right? We have to have a ton of details, right? Because, you know, you don't have any impact, you don't have any input afterwards. If you do the special permit, then you do.
By right, they, that's it.
Well, I understand the by right, but I'm just curious, as far as this project goes, it would be based on the development agreement, I'm guessing that.
Go ahead.
Once this goes, is Mashpee Commons going to stay the 25 years? Are they going to sell off all the lots? And then, once they get all the lots sold off, they're going to pull out and say, maybe have a little office and say, you've got to go buy this book with the design and architect? But, I mean, it's nice to have Mashpee Commons there, now, we have a problem, Mashpee Commons is there, but once this, this zone gets shaved, are they going to sell their lots? And we, we have to deal with individual developers, and not go to Mashpee Commons, say, hey, what is the purpose? I mean, is, maybe Mashpee Commons can answer that, or, I don't know if you know that question, but that, that thing I'd be worried about, dealing with 20 different developers, and have to go each one of them, like, we're having a problem with this one, and that one, or developer, I worked on plenty of jobs, they start big, and they lose everything, and then the, the job sits there for two years, before they get somebody else come in there. At least right now, we have Mashpee Commons that we can talk to and go to. Is, is that the plan of this project?
Dennis, you're talking about ownership, so let's say Mashpee Commons sells this to a new owner, are they bound by this project? Are they, do they have to continue with this agreement, if it's, if, if it transfers ownership?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, do they have to-
I, I, I think along the same lines, if they're party to the agreement, and they, and they sell off their ownership of the property, how, is, is the new party, the new owner automatically assume the privileges as stated in the, in the development agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There you go, Dennis.
Okay.
Even if it's numerous parties.
I like that in writing, though.
What if, just playing scenarios, so what if you had that, you had that agreement, let's say it gets transferred to a new owner, they abide by that, they get into trouble, thing gets broken up into pieces, sold off to creditors. If you don't have a master owner of all the property, and you've got the underlying zoning still in place, what governs?
Good, good question.
Wasn't prepared for that question. But happy to look, happy to look at it for you. I'll look at it for you.
I think what, and I didn't plan on asking it, but just, you know, I think what, what all this conversation is getting at is, from the town's perspective, in terms of the long-term future, what assurances are there? Because we all know that the zoning ultimately drives the bus. And so, if things happen that no one anticipates, despite all good faith at this point, and the zoning stays in place, can we get left with zoning without the other stuff?
Is there something in writing in the, that we can put in the development agreement to protect ourselves?
Possibly.
I think that's a legal question.
Before I, you know, commit to that, I think I'll, I'll need to, you know-
I mean, it's, it's a fairly down-the-weaves conversation, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, does a bankruptcy court judge have the right to void out all these obligations? That, you know, that, to play this scenario out to its, you know, darkest conclusion, that's the question that I think people would want to know the answer to.
And I'm happy to, to find that answer for you.
I mean, along that same line, I think that, you know, the, the language should be in the zoning article as well, that it's conditional on acceptance of all terms as outlined in the DA, you know, for that specific purpose. So, when, when, when the Cape Cod Commission envisioned these growth incentive areas, and, you know, focused growth areas of activity, and activity centers and such, you know, that whole reasoning, that concept, it really works well, I guess, in most scenarios, when you focus your area of development in those concentrated areas, in those activity centers. So, therefore, logically, for that to, to come to fruition and, and, and be most effective, then you have to have less development, or minimal development, in the other areas. So, you know, did the Cape Cod Commission consider a project taking a town to max build-out, when they, you know, envisioned this process working for Mashpee Commons, and Mashpee Commons bringing a package that's taken us almost to max build-out? Are we going to then put moratoriums in the other areas for subdivisions on other properties in town? Is, is that how it's supposed, best implemented for it to work successfully in protecting, you know, other resources?
So, the concept around the place types was really identifying that we do have unique areas across the Cape, and like you just mentioned, those community activity centers are areas that can accommodate additional growth and density, they've got adequate infrastructure, either already there or planned, but there are other areas, such as those rural development areas, that really may not be able to accommodate that additional growth. And so, it's in the growth policy, we really want to focus growth and development in these community activity centers, and away from these other areas. So, incentivizing growth and development into these areas where it makes sense, where we can accommodate it, and away from these other areas is really where the focus is. And so, certainly, I think what you're seeing in the regional policy plan, and a lot of what we discussed tonight, is, is that sentiment, and is along those same lines. And so, while the regulatory piece of that is really focusing that, incentivizing that within the goals and objectives in the regional policy plan, there are, are ways that it's more of a disincentive to locate in the other areas. So, there, there are things built in that does, I think, get at the, get at the question that you're asking, David.
Again, David, you can do-
We could change our zoning in other areas, as part of a big package, to concentrate the development in the Commons area, should we want, or we could do that, we could propose buying certain segments of land, take them as offsets, take them off the market.
Or you can-
There's a variety of things we could do.
You can ask the developer to provide, to provide that open space elsewhere.
But it's just, you know, we-
Yeah, that's the transfer development.
We would have a bunch of choices, but, you know, you're right, if you take everything you were going to do, you put it here, and you don't offset the rest of the stuff, you end up with double.
Right, that, that, that's my point.
And then you kind of screwed.
You know, if, if every place type is taken to its max level, then what benefit was there at the end of the day to protecting those resources?
And that's where those natural areas and other areas really aren't ones that we want to see and anticipate additional growth and development, it's the other areas.
Right, but that's different, place types are different than having a transfer or development, right? All within one project, all, all from one developer.
Absolutely, right.
I'd like to know more about what David was talking about, the, the mandatory studies that are required of a DRI. How, how do I find that out?
You can look at our development agreement application, or, I'm sorry, our development of regional impact application, that will give you all the, the application requirements.
Just because, you know, a development of regional impact is 10,000 square feet, or 30,000 housing units, right?
Thirty.
Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty, sorry. So, if you take the math, this, this project is 170 DRIs. So, if a DRI is an automatic environmental impact statement, you know, then this should trigger that, too. Do you know what I mean? So, I, I think that anything that is, is required for a DRI should be required for this.
Agreed, I think the process should be more stringent, not less stringent, because of the magnitude and scale of the project. You know, I would hate to not have those things that are incorporated into the DRI review omitted through this DA process in any way at all. You know, the Cape Cod Commission does a great job in the review process and findings and determinations, they're very comprehensive, and, you know, I, I look forward to that information in guiding the process. In establishing the prefer, performance measures on the town side, though, because we are negotiating an agreement, I do feel as though, you know, it, it would be advisable for the town to get independent studies, though, on matters of impact to the town, on various levels with, you know, economics and environmental, and all the other different considerations, housing stock, you know, retail space, you know, with storefronts and stuff closing, and people going into online shopping, I don't, I don't even know if this is sustainable to have that much commercial space in the area. That's a question that I have, I don't expect it to be answered here. I would like for independent review and analysis on behalf of the town to inform our negotiations in the DA development. I don't see how you can do it without it. The other thing that I, I have concern with is, is establishing parameters on, so, looking at what the current property owners are entitled to by right, under current zoning now, and looking at that, and then, what, what, how much room are we willing to bend, you know?
Who answers that question? Is that something that comes out of, Chris, your staff analysis, or is that something-
At zoning.
Since done locally?
Zoning. I mean, that sounds like a local discussion.
Okay. Because, that's critical.
Because I, I don't want us bending over backwards, and then, you know, at the end of the day, we don't get that many proffers. I would hate to see the process go that way. I think it's only fair to, for the town, and in the best interests of the town constituents and residents, to set up parameters and say, this is what you're allowed to build by right now, under current zoning, and then give them a little wiggle room to, you know, we've heard Mr. Chase come in and state that, you know, under the current zoning and stuff, he's not, it's not financially viable to do it under the current zoning. So, that initiated this whole process, but we're not, the town's not willing to bend over backwards here for, you know, one, essentially, one project proponent. So, I think it's critical that we set parameters, and, you know, whether that's a percentage increase to the, through the zoning changes, or what have you, those parameters need to be established before you start negotiating a DA, or start amending the zoning, in my opinion.
But one of the things, you know, I'd like to know, before getting too far down the road in this conversation, is what does that legal by right, current, future look like, and do we like it?
Right.
Because we're not comparing what's there now, which is empty spa, you know, open space and trees, which a lot of people, you know, would like to see what stays there, but we're comparing what's legally buildable, permissible now, versus what they're proposing, and what's the difference there? Because if you're, if you look at it from where it is now, to what they're proposing, it feels something, you know, radically different, if what they can do and what they want to do, the gap is going to, it has to be narrower. But, you know, and which one's better for the town? And I don't have an answer for that right now, but I don't feel like I have the information on that particular question, to be able intelligently offer an answer about where we've been starting.
And that's where I'm at as well.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, the existing zoning build-out, there was a presentation by Mashpee Commons on June 2nd, and it, it, it was on just C1. I, I submitted another question, and then I, I took it back. I, I, I didn't know if we were going to be talking about zoning anymore, or development agreements, or whatever, but there's, there's, there's several zonings that apply to this land. C1, they have a comprehensive permit, they have a couple of special permits that are still open, and the open space incentive development bylaw. So, my idea was to, to see some of those maximum build-outs, based on those zoning bylaws. I, I think it might be advantageous, most advantageous to the town, to have our own independent consultant to do that, because then you can easily mix, mix and match, if you kept the Chapter 40b in there, what does it look like? If you took it out, and you, you did it all by OSID, what does it look like, like that? And I think that can give us the maximum numbers and square footage of what they can build, and it's not by right, it's all by special permit, so we might want to strike that, because I think that's one of the things that the developer wants, is, is by right. Right now, we don't, we don't have that.
But the underlying point is, they own the land, they have legal rights and processes that govern what they can do, but they can do something.
Right.
And we need to be able to understand what that is, so we can articulate and explain it to people who live in town, who are going to be ultimately in that position. Right now, you know, when you start talking about, you know, districts and zoning requirements, and this is special permit, this is that, you lose everybody. So, we have to figure out on our side, some way to say, this is what the current state of legally allowed development is on the parcels under consideration.
Right.
And, yeah, we should be able to figure that, I don't want to ask them for that, that's not their job. It's our job, we should be able to figure that out.
And a good engineer will look at what's already been built, what are the trends in town, and have a reasonable, you know, build-out analysis.
May I, oh, go ahead, please.
No.
Go ahead.
One of the questions that I received, that I'd like a little clarity on, is, number one, how many public hearings do you anticipate? And secondly, when will the issue regarding the height of the proposals be thoroughly discussed and vetted?
So, those are great questions, Madam Chair. There is no set number of hearings that has to happen, or must happen, and I think that that's part of how we can move forward and define the process for ourselves, and we have the ability to be able to work collaboratively and define what that looks like, and it's, it's broadly based on the impacts and how that review process goes, and do we proceed with subject matter hearings, or is there a different process? So, that has yet to be defined, and certainly, we will be looking at community character and design, and that's part of that, that looking at the, the impacts and looking at the co- and looking at the total, the total design package will be part of that process.
If I may, that's required, the building height is required for the application to be complete. It's in your regulations.
So certainly, that will be part of the review.
Yeah. But, I mean, it, it's not a complete application unless it has the height.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, and just further on that point, Rodney, we have, the planning board has scheduled meetings with very specific topics. Dimensional is one of those.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we'll, we'll hammer that out. So first of all, thank you, Christie, for, for the information and for coming tonight. I guess a couple of questions. How many development agreements that the commission has been involved with have been extended? There's been a lot of conversation around 25 years. You know, of the development agreements that, that you've entered into, how many of them have been extended beyond their original seven years, 10 years? Do you, do you happen to know?
I thought this was your first.
Not off the top of my head. But certainly, I, I can get back to you with a detail on that. But we have issued lengthy development agreement terms. So that's not out of the ordinary, certainly.
Just, just curious. Secondly, the talk about joint meetings, I would encourage more than less with the three parties. I'm, I'm sure there are milestones along the development agreement negotiation process where those joint meetings would make more sense than less. Certainly, you can be more efficient if you're working subcommittees and then you come together at certain points. I'm sure there are logical breakpoints where you'd call everybody back in. We have, and this is more of a, of a restatement of what we've said maybe three times already at planning meetings, probably more. We have no intention of bringing a zoning change to the residents of Mashpee without having a development agreement, you know, in place. These are, these are running in parallel paths. We've been very clear about that. Please, somebody publish it so that I don't have to keep saying it.
It was, it was in the newspaper.
We, and so we should put that to rest. You know, I, I think the, the point about what's there today and what it would look like under current zoning and what's there today versus what it would look like under what's being proposed, I think that's a very important exercise. And whoever decides to do that, I think it's important that we get that done. I just want to make just a clarifying point. There wasn't a deadline missed in this process. Let's just confirm that.
I, I disagree.
I'm talking to Chris, Christie. There was not a deadline missed. This is a, we understand, this is the first time three parties have been brought together to put together a development agreement. It's gonna be clunky, the process is gonna be iterative, it's gonna be fluid. But everybody's acting in good faith.
Correct. And we really want to make sure that we have all of the information that we need to really be able to review the impacts of the project. And so it is iterative in nature and there may be other things that come up that we may request throughout the, throughout the negotiation and hearing process as well, so.
Thank you.
This whole, this whole agreement is all new to all of us. It's never been done before.
Madam Chair. So the, the decision is March 5th, 2020. And it says you have to have the completed application in by March 5th, 2021. And in the regulations, it says that there can be an extension of one year for good cause.
So let's be clear. Your, your, the commission is reviewing the application that's been submitted.
Correct.
And there probably will be a request for additional information as the process goes on because it's, it's iterative, it's the first time we've done this. We get it.
But it has to be cured.
Thank you.
That, that's what I'm saying, is it has to be cured so there's no legal liability if we enter into a development agreement with that, with that liability there. There's a way to cure it, but it has to be done.
I think what.
You want to cure it or do you want to have them kick it out?
I, no, I want them to cure it.
I think what we're hearing is the deadline was, there was not a deadline missed. Is that correct?
But it's a legally binding determination.
May I ask, may I ask Christie? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to me.
I'm talking to Christie.
So application materials have been submitted again. This is an iterative process. We anticipate more materials being submitted. Our staff is currently reviewing all of those materials to see what additional information will be needed prior to impaneling and going, a, a committee and going to the, to the first public hearing.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dan.
One of the questions John asked was, how many development agreements the Cape Cod Commission had with Cape Cod? And you said, oh, I'll have to get back to you. And then a couple of seconds later, you say, this is the first development agreement we ever done.
Now, this is the first tri-party.
Three party.
The three party. This is the first three party.
All right, that's what I wanted to get clear. There's, so there's a two-party development. But there's two-party development agreement?
We've done two-party development agreements. This is the first where you have an applicant, Mashpee Commons, the Cape Cod Commission and the town.
All right, that's, I didn't understand.
Yep.
Okay.
Process question? And maybe, I don't know, it's to Jordan. But looking at the MEPA thresholds, I mean, sure looks like some ENFs kind of get triggered. When it, when and if it does, does it put your process on hold? What's your relationship and your timelines and the chart you showed? If there is a, an ENF filed and then if the secretary requires a full environmental impact assessment?
So, I mean, we can, I, I think we'd like to hear from the applicant too. I know that they've reached out. But I think before we give you any more substantive information, it would probably be best to hear from them on the status of it. Is there something more?
I mean, just on the spatial extent of the footprint of the area and the proximity to the, and being budding the waterways, it would seem that it would require, you know, an environmental impact study.
And I know they've had previous ones and I just don't, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, so I'm happy to.
It'd just be something that'd be helpful to get some more information on when you get a chance. But also, and a finer point, you know, because the, at least as it relates to land clearing, the thresholds talk about a certain acreage threshold. Obviously, over 25 years, you know, it'll happen in a series of smaller actions. So it raises in my mind a concern about segmentation. And so I just wonder what the relationship between the duration of your agreement and the alteration activity you expect in each typical year and how it relates, how you're, how, you guys think about it as from an ENF filing point of view, and I know you can't speak to this, but would like to get some guidance back how the secretary's office would tend to look at those types of questions? Because if you're gonna, you know, you alter 170 acres, the threshold's 50, you know, but if you're doing it, you know, 10 acres at a time over, you know, 30 years, you know, can somebody, can somebody make the argument that they're not tripping the MEPA threshold?
So what would you call it?
That's not your administrative question to answer, but it's another one that jumps up. So if in a hypothetical situation, under development agreement, non-Mashpee Commons, somebody triggers an ENF requirement, do you pause while they're going through the MEPA process or do they happen concurrently? How, how do you, how do you connect the two processes?
They would do that first generally.
They would do that first?
Generally, in, in projects that go through MEPA first.
Okay.
You need a certificate and then they go.
And then they come to you. What if they start you and then they realize they're triggering an ENF and they have to go back and get a certificate?
I personally have not seen that happen in my time, so.
Okay. So this may be a first, another first.
Madam Chair.
John.
Thank you. So the one I'm listening to is, we have an applicant here, they own the property. We don't know what's allowed to be built there as it says right now. But obviously, there can be property built, buildings built on that property. So we have an opportunity to sit down and negotiate a plan with the developer, the property owner. And from what I see, this could be beneficial to the town of Mashpee. It doesn't have to be negative to the town of Mashpee. It could be a way to control the growth and bring in the, the right types of, nobody wants to have empty commercial buildings. I, I can't see that being beneficial at all. And it's an opportunity for us to sit down and really draft something that is beneficial to the community as a whole. Whether it be housing we're looking at, affordable housing, all the different businesses are allowed. I think this is a great opportunity. I'd love to see exactly what can be built there right now because we should look at that, know what that is and look at what's being presented to us. I think this is a truly, truly a great opportunity. And we all have a part of it. We can all direct it and change it. It's not etched in stone, it's just the beginning. So I, I think we just need to move forward. I feel like we're, we're bickering over things that we don't even know the answers to. And let's, let's have this conversation, let's start the conversation, move forward. Christie's here, you have the, you have the Cape Cod Commission behind us, working with us to, to put everybody together. I, I just think we're asking the what else, what else, what ifs. But there's no answers to what ifs because anything can happen. Thank you.
John?
Just to add on to, actually, Tom said a lot, a lot of what I was gonna say already, but, first off, I hear, I, I've been hearing a lot about the 25-year thing. I think that's a great thing. Because does anybody want this major development to happen in 10 years? I, first off, do not. So I want this to be, you know, slowly progressing along and I hope it takes 35 years before this all happens. So 25 years, I have no problem with 25 years. That's just my opinion. Second of all, you know, he does own the land. So he could develop it as is, under this, under the present zoning and do what, under the present zoning and do what he wants. Again, he could do that. He could sell it off and we could be doing this process with 10 or 15 other individual developers that we don't know and trust, that we know what, we know what he has done so far. And I'm not, this does not, don't take this as, I'm 100% for Mashpee Commons and they can do, they have the keys to the city, they can do whatever they want. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, as Tom was saying, let's just, let's keep this going, you know, collaboratively, positively, and keep this communication going because there's, there's too much, there's still those little negativity and those comments going on out there. It's like, let's just come to an agreement. It's gotta be good for us, it's gotta be good for Mashpee Commons. Otherwise, we're not gonna, it's not gonna go forward. So, but again, there's a lot of benefits to working together to, for the, for the best Mashpee. That's it.
If you don't have commons, so you can't get a product that everybody likes. So you're gonna have back and forth.
Sure.
You know?
And, and that's why we're here. And that's why we're all sitting here at the table. We all have a seat at the table.
I don't think anybody's against a 25-year agreement, development agreement, where we're against that we can't look 10 years at and say, this ain't good for the town no more. We want to kind of revise it.
And that's what you can have in place. Christie said you can have a revision.
No, they could have a 35-year agreement. But we gotta be able to, every so often, the town gotta step back and say, is this working for the town?
And maybe also, Dennis, the developer might say, hey, it's not working for me.
Well, he can do that now.
Maybe I can help.
He can do that now with this development agreement. But we can't.
No, no, he, no, he couldn't.
Can't.
If there's a development agreement placed between us and the developer, he can't then say, I don't want to do this anymore.
Okay, okay. That last meeting they said they could, but now, okay. But I don't think.
We'll have to clarify. So I, I'm glad that people brought up, you know, technical experts. And I just want to thank the, the Bodis Luckman for getting involved in this and the town manager talking about hiring consultants. So that's really important because we are gonna need independent consultants. And I, I've made a short list of them. You know, the project proponent is, is proposing innovative parking and sharing of parking. So I think that we should have an accessibility and an ADA consultant to make sure that the needs of our aging population and people who have mobility challenges are met with that innovative parking. I think David brought up economy. We need an economic specialist to review and interpret the forthcoming fiscal impact study to make sure that we understand whether the taxes generated or whether there's a tax burden or a tax benefit for the project and how the residential component and the commercial component.
Mary, can I just stop you a moment? Does anyone have any more questions for Christie on this? Because we can discuss this amongst ourselves at our meeting. Christie's been standing here to answer these questions and then you can, after she's, we can dismiss her and she can talk amongst ourselves.
I have a question, or a couple of questions. Christie, on these development agreements, 25 years certainly establishes a, you know, a long playing field and gets a developer a chance to do what he wants. Do, you know, what his plan is and, and not have any roadblocks along the way. I, I see very few words about phased in portions of this 25-year development. Don't, don't see, you know, like, I could see a benefit of having a 25-year development broken down into five phases. So everybody at each phase can then assess the performance of the development.
He, he's got to speak closer to the mic.
Oh, okay. So I, I see a great benefit going along with other members of the board that a 25-year development is beneficial to probably the town and to Mashpee Commons. But the, the, having it broken down into phases might be also very beneficial to the town to mitigate risk in having a runaway situation. And I, I wanted to know if those considerations are, you know, in part of the agreement or can be part of the agreement. And then along with a lengthy agreement of 25 years, is there any performance bonds associated with previous agreements? And will there be any associated with this agreement?
So it's a great question. And part of the, the whole reasoning behind going through the development agreement process is for those larger, more systemic projects that may have multiple uses and that may need to be phased in over time. So I think that certainly will be part of the, the project proposal and incorporated into the development agreement itself. So I think the short answer to your question is yes. That certainly is something as a consideration and part of the reason why a lengthier agreement makes a lot of sense in this case.
And on performance?
So if I understand your question correctly, we will be looking at all of the impacts of the project. And if there are certain strategies to mitigate some of those impacts, that will be incorporated into the, the development agreement itself. So we would consider, we would consider all of those things. And I wouldn't be able to go into any detail until we have the more substantive discussions.
Is there anything excluding a requirement of a performance bond?
I don't know the answer to that, but I am happy to get back to you.
Thank you.
Just two.
Sure.
Two quick points. The, it's taken 35 years to get what we have today. So 25 sounds long. It's, Mashpee Commons as it stands today has been in development for 35 years. And secondly, I just want to, I want to, you know, I am, I personally am grateful that the commission is involved in this process. I can't imagine the town and Mashpee Commons doing this candidly without the commission in place. You know, your resources and your, your expertise will be appreciated.
Great. Anybody else have any questions?
I'll say. Just one thing that bothered me a little bit, you know, initially in your, earlier in your presentation when Mary was speaking of the deadlines and such, meeting deadlines and if the documents were all handed in. It sounds like there's a little discretion on the part of the commission to require all documents by the deadline in their entirety as listed in the, in the section D or if they continue to supplement that information as the process proceeds out. And, you know, in your response, you said, you know, we, it's a little different than the DRI process and, and, but you want to support the application. That kind of bothered me to hear, you know, the commission saying that they want to support the application when, you know, as a regional authority, you know, I think. when, you know, as a regional authority, you know, I think the, the loyalties to the town more so than the applicant. Um, so I, I just wanted to call attention to that.
You know what, David? If, if the applicant had come in with a full and complete set of documents, everything they want decided, without having this iterative conversation, we'd all flip and say, what kind of negotiation is that? So, I mean, the commission's in a damned if you do, damned if you don't position in the sense that, you know, they're trying to work with them to bring forward the information that we all need to make a decision to determine if we wanna participate in this process or not. And so I'm reluctant to be critical of them for taking some stuff, getting feedback, asking for more, so that they get a record that reflects the conversations and the input of the community. I think we'd be having a very different conversation if we're 100% complete by the, by the letter of, of, of that subsection, which I will admit readily I've not read.
But on the, on the same token, we're just getting.
So we gotta give them, I mean, if we're, if we're into this as a collaborative conversation, that none of us are obligated to execute if we don't like it, then I'm not bothered by the fact that stuff, that the commission's taking a flexible position. I didn't hear Christie say.
This last year has been a very interesting year.
That they're predisposed to the applicant. What I heard them saying is that they're looking to make a very difficult, cumbersome process work on an ex, one of the more challenging applications that has been, uh, set forth to, to, to do, and they're doing their best to make that work for all of us. So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk out with them feeling satisfied for that.
But we're all seeming to be forgetting that we just kept getting over the COVID-19, where people were remotely participating and working from their home, maybe not had access to the information necessary to, to make these decisions. So I can't see if you're, if, you know, businesses were shut down, people stayed home, nothing was getting done for, for months. Now all of a sudden, they're a few days late, whatever, seems reasonable to me. I don't see a problem at all.
But I think making it a few days late kind of misses the larger point. I think the larger point is, if, if we didn't have a pandemic and they came in with a complete application, sitting where I sit.
Yeah, we wouldn't be happy.
I'd be pissed off about it, because, you know, this is supposed to be a negotiation and a discussion. So I'm not all that troubled by the fact that they're finding ways to make the administrative process work for the participants in the process. And they're just, commons is just one.
There is a way for them to cure it. And I didn't wanna bring this up, but it's my roundabout way of talking about responsiveness by applicants. Having the DR, the, the development agreement process where there is actually, you know, actual required parts of the development agreement ensures that we have a, a complete application. So I, I, as we go forward and start to work on zoning and all of that stuff, if the development agreement isn't complete, and I don't have the information in that development agreement, it makes it difficult to make decisions.
Then vote no.
Good decision. And you vote no.
At the end, I, I guess.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna vote no about something that is silly. Complete the application and give it to me.
I, I think, I think what Andrew's saying is, we're willing to give some latitude.
Yeah.
Because it's a, a new process, it's the first time we've gone through it. Uh, you know, the commission is doing their best to collect the information that's necessary to move the process along.
And I, and my.
But it's in the regulation. This is not.
I understand that.
This is from 2014. These regulations are on.
I understand that.
Never done this before.
Right.
But, but.
This is, it's.
As a three-party.
Have you read them? They're not that complicated. I'm just saying, I'm looking forward to a full application, and it's. We all want all the information. It needs to be cured, that, that issue about the, the March 5th to, to 2021 deadline in their decision needs to be cured. They have a way to do it. I just don't want them to forget it, so that it's a legal liability to the development agreement and years later. And I'm, I am, I'm looking forward to all the things that they're required to have in the application, and I would love to have it.
That's just the, you know, the, the part that I kinda heard, kinda peeked in my ear, was the, the, the fact that there's, there's a certain set of documents, uh, for the application to be required, uh, considered complete and are required. Um, so, you know, in hearing that, that's kind of what I was focused on. If, if all those documents weren't submitted, then I guess I would have to agree with Mary that it's not, i- i- you can't qualify it as being complete. But, you know, if, if, if you handed in all the, all the information and all the required documents were there, and they were, uh, looked at and determined insufficient, and you asked for supplemental information because it was lacking, then I would have much more flexibility in that, in that way. But, you know, that's just my.
I think it's tough to decide for declaring something. They haven't declared a complete, so.
That's what she said.
Well, we're, we're premature.
Yeah, so I, you know.
But David, by the same token, you also said that certain thresholds get activated by this development agreement. And if the threshold gets met, um, a study gets done. And you actually said that they should be held to a higher threshold. So the threshold is set. The commission has done a good job, they, they do a great job at setting all these thresholds that generate these requirements. But you wanted to hold them to a higher standard. So I think we all have to look at this with an open mind, and just as John just said. It's a new process, we're all going down, we're all trying to work together, and I think we just need to work together. Let this process go forward, and we'll see how it goes. We're gonna collect the information as we go, and as, as they just pointed out, as Andrew pointed out, if someone doesn't like it, you vote no. And, 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 you know, that's how it goes. And I think that's, we should just move forward with an open mind on this. We shouldn't be focusing on this negative part.
We're not doing anything until we have all the information.
You know, frankly, there's too many good lawyers involved on all sides for somebody to make a fundamental process problem.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah.
But, but if the issue is, but there's an underlying, you just said it, Mary, there's an underlying issue about attitude about what we're doing here. And if, from where I sit, we're trying to work through detail, complex things that one will build on the other, and then you'll need something else, and you agree to this, and then all of a sudden, that raises a bunch of questions that nobody thought of. Well, if you do it that way, then what does it do to the traffic? What does it do to the endangered species habit? What does it do this, what does it do that? And so I don't wanna get so fixated on a list of regulatory requirements at the beginning of the process that we lose sight of the ability to have that conversation. Yes, by the end of the day, all the information to everybody's satisfaction needs to be provided before they can declare it complete, before they can write a recommendation to the commission for, to sign off on the thing, before any of us, I think, would credibly ask our voters to do anything. So I think there's plenty of opportunity to fix all that stuff. I guess the underlying attitude is, we're either gonna do this as a cooperative conversation and see where it takes us with all having the ability to walk away from the table, or we're gonna hew to a, to a narrow set of interpretations of rules and regulations. And if that's what we're doing, don't waste my time.
Can I ask you a question?
So I'm telling you, so I'm telling you right now, this thing's a failure.
Right. Can I ask you a question? Is it cooperative for an applicant not to have a complete application?
I, I, you know what?
That's my point.
At, at a complete application, at the point at which a complete application is necessary and due, then that's when it should be complete. But I guarantee you, if everything came in that said, this is exactly what we're gonna do, and this is it, and you guys either sign off on it or not, we would have, be having a very hostile conversation with the applicant.
I'm just saying that I've been in the position before, not necessarily with this applicant, that the application isn't complete. And that's not a cooperative situation.
It's part of a three-party development agreement.
No, no.
Okay, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about.
That's why this is different.
But I have 16 years being a citizen planner, okay? And when the application, and I'm just giving a heads up, that there's a legal liability there. And I don't like this implication that there's an attitude, okay? That's not cool.
I didn't make an implication. I made a statement.
I think, I think we're, you know, all this conversation has been good, healthy conversation, and, and I look forward to continued conversation around it. You know, I don't see it as bickering. I think it, it, it stimulates the thought, and I think that, you know, we owe our residents the due diligence of vetting this project out fully and comprehensively.
No question.
And, um, you know, I, I look forward to continued conversations around that, to that effect. You know, and, um, just ask that we all, you know, appreciate indifference.
I'd like to thank Christie and, and the Cape Cod Commission for coming in tonight and spending your evening with us. And I wanna thank the board, uh, the planning board, and my board for sitting across the table and discussing this. And I think we should, we're gonna have to do it again and again and again.
Agreed.
So, uh, thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Thanks, Aaron.
And thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, Chairperson. Thank you.
I, I had some, Madam Chair, I was. Do you wanna discuss with the board? Do you wanna go first?
I just wanna say, the whole thing is up to the people of the town of Mashpee to vote on this. It's not the selectmen or the planning board.
It's what we present. Yes, you're right, Dennis.
So it's the town, and if we don't present it right, it's not gonna pass. So we gotta make sure we work together to make this pass.
And I think we will. I think we will.
I hope so.
I agree.
That's all I want to say.
Mary?
Sure. So again, I wanna thank the, um, the Board of Selectmen and the town manager for their interest and support on this matter. Um, we talked a little bit about, um, technical experts and consultants. Um, and Rodney was kind enough to, you know, say that there is some funds for that, and I wanted to address that. Um, you know, I think there's a really big, um, uh, need for independent, um, in-house experts and independent consultants that are hired. Um, of course, our in-house experts, you know, it depends on whether they have time and capacity to do a review of a project this big. But again, um, you know, the applicant is proposing some innovative parking and shared parking and stuff like that that seems really interesting, but we gotta make sure we have a consultant that can, um, address accessibility and, um, American Disability Act.
And you have to have ADA compliance in any project.
Right.
Right.
Right, but you might see that conflicting.
Okay.
Right? The, the innovative parking and sharing, you might see, for the first time, things like that conflicting. So it'd be good if we had somebody on board for, to protect our residents that have mobility issues. Also, an, um, economic specialist to review and interpret the forthcoming fiscal impact study to help the town determine the tax burden or the tax benefit from the development. To review the project performer to ensure, uh, financial feasibility of the development, and to conduct a commercial market study, um, so that we know that our community and region can absorb the proposed, uh, commercial space. We know that it can absorb the housing, the proposed housing. And then, um, the engineers and experts to review and/or prepare impact studies such as the environmental impact study. I mean, if this doesn't trigger a MIPA review, um, I'm.
Nothing does.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna want an independent environmental impact study, uh, for our residents. Um, infra, infrastructure impact study, a comparative zoning, uh, build-out analysis comparing the new zoning to the existing zoning using current trends in, uh, building. A traffic and transportation impact study. Some of these things are gonna be supplied to, uh, as part of the development agreement application. Um, but we should have somebody that can review it, make sure it's okay, explain it to us, and advise us on, um, mitigate, how to, how, how to best mitigate the identified impacts. And also a u- utility impact study that pulls in your drinking water and your wastewater. Then we, we should also agree now that no party should have the authority to dictate, um, who the town uses as their technical experts. Um, and again, that if the town doesn't have the capacity, um, in staff or expertise to review the application in-house, um, we should secure the technical experts. I imagine this is gonna impose a significant cost to the town, um, and the applicant should provide the funding to the town to cover these costs. Their application, uh, to the town is voluntary. They don't have to ask for it. Um, and in turn, the town shouldn't have to bear the cost of the review. So that was, thank you, Madam Chair.
And I think many of the resources Mary speaks about are available from the Cape Cod Commission.
Also. Yes, but I'm not referring to the Cape Cod Commission.
I am.
I'm, uh, talking about independent, um, town.
I'd rather have independent myself.
Understood, but I, I, I think many of those resources exist at the commission.
I think they come along a, a little late in the process, only because they, they compile the information while they're reviewing the process, and then, you know, when it goes to the, uh, public hearing portion. But if you're mitigating, if you're mitigating the agreement early on, I feel as though the information's needed on the front end for the town to be able to negotiate a DA in the zoning changes early on to know where the town's position is in protecting resources. Um, you know, so that's, you know, in, in being familiar with the Cape Cod Commission, um, that I, I feel it's best suited for the town to also get an independent study.
Would it be a parallel scope, or would it be something different?
Say again?
Would it be the same type of assessment that the commission would be doing, or is it, is it a different kind of thing?
A lot of the things that they would look at would be similar to, you know, in the end.
Yeah.
But it's where they come in, in the process that I'm most concerned with, and so I.
I think it would be helpful if the planning board formally, not tonight obviously, took a position on what independent services you're looking for, and what the broad scope of that would be. You know, speaking as one member of this board, I agree that, you know, for certain things, we should have some independent review, and it ought to be early, not later.
Right.
But, you know, be able to figure out, knowing from you as a board, what you would find helpful in your process. I think that would allow us to take a look at what money's available, what the avenues are, and, you know, come up with a response to that.
I expect we'll learn more of that, Andrew, as we go through the next series of meetings that are gonna be topic-specific.
There are things you can all agree on now, sooner than later, if, you know, the sooner we hear what you want, the sooner.
Yeah, I mean, those meetings run through at the end of July.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Mary, if you could send me your list, I'd appreciate it.
But I'd like to have it be something from the, from the plan, from the full planning board.
I appreciate that ask, Mary, can you send the list? But the planning board is five members, and I would rather us discuss it and present a list.
And send us the list.
As a board.
That would be great.
I, I really think it would be better. So we can talk about it, and we all can understand what's best.
That would be awesome. Thank you. That would be good. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Okay, will you want to adjourn your meeting?
I make the most of it, Jared.
Second.
John, one second, before you adjourn.
Yes.
It's a matter of our meeting scheduled for this Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
Send an email to the board about the possibility of canceling it, because we have no presentation scheduled, so before we adjourn.
I make emotionally cancel the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of canceling the meeting Wednesday?
Aye.
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 And adjourning the meeting tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Boom, boom. We're adjourning our joint meeting.
I have one more, right? I'll move.
You, you.
Second.
You have one more.
I know, but we're staying. I'm just adjourning.
All right, good job, guys.
You don't have to, I don't think.
I don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, under new business, excuse me, our meeting is not adjourned. Excuse me, our meeting is still going on? That's okay. Under new business, discussion and approval of native land trust designation of swim areas in Wakeby Pond.
So, if you want, um.
Ashley, this came from Ashley. You should have a.
Yeah, there's a memo from Ashley on this. Basically, what they're looking for is, um, the native land trust owns the three islands in Wakeby Pond. Uh, they were donated to the native land trust a little bit over a year ago. Um, they've become an area that has congregated a lot of people, and then basically, the islands are getting beaten up pretty badly. Uh, and so the trust has asked town for designation of swim areas, um, around the islands so that, um, it would limit the motorized traffic.
And rope them off?
Well, they, they would mark them.
Mark them.
And so once an area's designated a swim area, you can enter with a non-motorized vessel, so people will still have access to the land, be able to paddle up, swim up, whatever they want, but you won't have the congregation of camping and the like as a way to protect the integrity of those islands. Uh, and so that went, that request something we have to approve, um, uh, subject. It got recommended to us by the Waterways Commission last week, I believe they met. Um, and so it's before this board for consideration. I know Dave Sampson is one of the selectmen from Sandwich, who, um, we're pretty close to being neighbors, even though we live in two separate towns. Um, I know Dave had been in contact and, and had been suggesting this with, uh, in, in discussion with the native land conservancy, so I don't know whether it's something Dave, you wanna hear from Dave, or whether the board's satisfied with what you have in front of you.
Is the board satisfied with what we have in front of us, or would you like?
Well, are these, are all the, the islands that you refer, are they islands?
Yes, there's three islands.
Are they all, are all three Mashpee?
Yes.
Islands?
Yep. And then, it's my understanding that, uh, there'll be donations to the native land conservancy, and they will provide the markers. So this doesn't cost the town anything. The town would then, um, our waterways assistants would be authorized then to enforce that swim area, much as they do the one that we share with town Sandwich on Ryder Conservation Land in Lowell Ollie on the other side, the north side of Wake.
Do they have markers for that?
Huh?
Are they marking that off?
There are, those are marked, are currently, and adequate and parked, swim area is also marked. There are, those are marked, are currently, inadequate park. Swim area is also marked. So, this would add, uh, to those already swim-marked areas.
So, the problem is, it sounds like, is, uh, is there boats pulling up and...
Yeah. They camp out for the day.
Yeah, so, I mean, I could, I could totally understand.
Is that an allowed use camping on the, on these islands, or is it not allowed?
It's not camping camping. It, I mean, they're open to the public, and I think the Native Land Conservancy wants to keep them open to the public. What they're responding to is the fact that people are on them, you know, all day, multiple days of the week during the season. Um, a lot of people camp fires, cooking fires, and it's just, it's just beating those, those resources down.
So, is it an enforcement issue? Are the fires allowed on that island?
There's no one to enforce it.
There's no one to, there's no harbor master in Mashpee, Wakeby?
The harbor master wouldn't, they are, but they need the swim area designation to enforce that.
Designated.
It's unenforceable unless we designate...
This is a tool for enforcement.
It's a tool for enforcement. This would give the harbor masters the ability to...
But, it would not allow for camping?
It would. If you wanna swim to it and kayak up to it and camp overnight, that's between you and the Native Land Conservancy.
You can't drop anchor and swim in.
You can swim in, too. You just have to stay outside, outside the...
Run your boat up into the land.
Yeah, run your boat up into it. That's really what this is about.
So, it's not, not putting your boat on the land?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. I can live with that.
And again, this is recommended by Ashley, correct?
And Waterways Commission.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion. We approve the designation of, um, the three islands in Wakeby Pond, Keith, Cleveland, and Jefferson Island as, uh, no swim areas.
Second.
Roll call?
Or, I'm sorry, not no swim areas, as swimming zones.
Swimming zones.
Excuse me.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um...
Why don't we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.